Okay, I'd like to call this board meeting of April 24th to order. My roll call, please. Newman present?
Smith present.
Cranston present. All that are evil.
..................................................................
Thank you. As you all know, Common's been away on vacation and the person that was supposed to get the minutes together somehow didn't do it. So there'll be no approval of the minutes. Mr. Caldwell?
Me.
All right. But, and as you know, the board has been trying to call in different departments to give us updates on their department and what's going on. And tonight, we have Ryan from the DPW to give a little bit of a presentation.
Good evening. Hope it builds up to the presentation phrase. But thanks for having me.
Yeah, keep and score.
I know. It's been a couple of months or a little over a year, I think, since I've been in. So happy to come back and give you guys an update, or a brief update anyways, on what some of the stuff we've been up to. So we had another successful winter season. In total, we did 17 snow and ice events. Just for reference, my first year here, 2021, '22, we did 32. Last year, we did 20. This year, we did 17. I'm okay with the decline. But every event is different and we have our own complex set of challenges with every different event. So, you know, we see now snow, ice, rain, sleet, or a mix of everything, you know, coming at the same time, which certainly prevents some challenges. So we made it through. We're ready for spring and we're excited to get going. So not having to focus on snow and ice in the months of February and March, our DPW crews were able to get out. We did a significant amount of tree work. We did trimming. We did takedowns along our roads and in our cemeteries. We also roughed in on new cemetery sections in Hillside. Those were actually paved yesterday. So we're selling lots quite quickly over there, or on our regular clip, but we were running out. So with money approved at a couple of town meetings ago, we were able to get those completed finally. And those lots will be for sale in short order. Now that we're confident we're done with the winter weather after that surprise April snow, we've hit the ground running street sweeping. A lot of time on our athletic fields for the last couple of weeks. The season's opened last week and, you know, our parks for all the spring activities. So in the coming weeks, we'll be focusing on the roads for the spring paving program, updating drainage ahead of our paving contractor coming to town. We have another aggressive year of paving projects we're preparing for. Products, for the most part, have been bid out with the exception of the base course on Pratt Junction Road. It's receiving a little bit more of a specialized treatment than we typically perform. Our current plans are to pave Ridgewood Road, Hastings Road, Westland Farm Road, and Roper Road this spring or early summer. Currently, the work is scheduled to begin around May 20th, but that date will change with weather. The two remaining roads on our 2024 paving schedule are Elliott Road and Pratt Junction Road. Elliott Road's going to require more drainage upgrades than the four we plan to do in the spring. So we'll be working on those over the summer months in hope to have that ready for the fall paving season. Pratt Junction Road presents a large number of challenges, including the industrial nature of the road, constant traffic load, two railroad crossings, and three locations requiring mass DOT access permits. Those include the two intersections with Lemonster Road and Choxa Road and the I-190 underpass. We've contracted with an engineering firm to assist us in that permitting process to ensure a smooth and timely process. That being said, when working with the railroad, timely's not always in the cards. But we're going to do everything we can to get that pushed forward this year. Our other option is to skip the areas close to the railroad, but in my opinion, it gives the appearance of an incomplete project and isn't something that I'm interested in doing at this time. The Complete Streets Grant Project, which will replace sidewalks on Maple Street from Main Street to Bird Street, as well as down Bird Street, will begin this spring and will be completed before the end of the fiscal year. The DPW is still seeing delays in vehicles, particularly smaller vehicles, for new ones that we've ordered. Currently, we're waiting on a pickup truck, as well as a one-time, smaller dump truck with a switchable body system. Delays are both on the manufacturer's side and the outfit side. So that being said, we're shifting our philosophy a bit and we're going to be performing a lot of the upfitting in-house with our own mechanics. We have very talented mechanics. We can do our own wiring of lights. We can install our own toolboxes and back racks. I've cost compared and it's almost a 50% savings for us to do it than for the upfitting people to do it. So our money can go further and I think that's going to, we're going to get a better quality product out of it because our mechanics are going to be the ones who've had their hands on it. We always end up diving into issues of other people or other work that gets done. So we're looking forward to when those trucks come in. For water department operations, water department's well underway with hydro flushing this spring, working their way through town in a systematic approach known as unidirectional flushing. Last year was a successful year in terms of our meter replacement, with a little over 25% of the meters being replaced with new meters and eaten endpoints that work in conjunction with the SMLD reading system. Unfortunately, the last few months, we have not been able to secure meters to couple with our readers. So the replacement's been delayed a little bit. We just sent out 150 letters on Monday. We finally got some meters in and we hope to have this pick up back over the spring and summer. As you likely saw, the water department was issued a violation for missing a deadline to install corrosion control treatment at our water facilities. The delay in installation was due to a number of factors, including permitting delays, additional testing required by Mass DEP, after them telling us we did not have to do that testing, and many other factors. I will say that I contested this violation significantly with Mass DEP to no avail. Just be advised that the violation requires that we send the same notification quarterly until the work's complete. We have funding to complete the work in the FY '25 budget. The deadline is the middle of October. So that being said, expect two more notifications, one in June and one again in September. They'll read the exact same way as the letter that already went out. For projects, we have a number of projects in the works. Two weeks ago, we opened bids for the West Sterling Wells Electrical Upgrade Project. This will replace the failing generator at our biggest water supply off Redemption Rock Trail, as well as upgrade all the primary electrical components at the station, including installation of variable frequency drives, or VFDs, which should significantly reduce electricity usage and allow more flexibility for us to ramp up the speed or down the speed of our well pumps. We expect this work to get underway as soon as possible, knowing that the lead times are significant for items like VFDs and the generator. Last week, we opened bids for the Redemption Rock Trail Water Main Phase 2 project. Sorry, Redstone Water Main Phase 2, my bad. This will continue our water main replacement on Redstone, replacing mains, hydrants, and services from where we left off just west of Rub Road in the area that power lines out to Clinton Road. And we're hoping to pave this road next year once all the water work is complete. The Crowley Road Well Project, which will bring a new water source to Sterling, is achieving some important milestones, including the completion of the well pumping test in the MIPA application. The next step is the Article 97 legislation with Mass DCR and the State of Massachusetts for use of the property that we've been studying. This is a process that will likely require a land swap with DCR. We've not even begun to look into land options or how this would play out at this point. This process will begin sometime in FY '25. And finally, I'd like to extend a thank you to the Select Board for creating the DPW Facility Committee to study our existing facility and come up with options going into the future. The DPW Board has solicited applications using the town's volunteer application process. It will be interviewing candidates at their May 14th board meeting for the two remaining spots on the committee. The Board will reconvene on May 22nd to make their final selection as to who they want to recommend to you folks for final appointment. It's expected, once the committee has all five members appointed, they will meet regularly, review the existing spaces, and the best direction to go in the future. And finally, the DPW will be hosting an open house and touch a truck event with area businesses on Saturday, May 4th, from 9:00 to noon. I encourage all to attend who wants to see our building, our fleet, enjoy a bag of popcorn, and participate in the townwide cleanup, which will also be meeting at the same location. That's all I have.
Okay. Do you have any questions? Sure.
No questions.
Christian? I just want to ask, are you still looking for summer help and do you want to take the time to let people?
Yes, thank you. So we are still looking for summer help. I have three secured right now. I could use one, at least one or two more. So over the age of 18, valid driver's license, that's about it. Those are the requirements. And then you show up to work. That's the hardest part to achieve sometimes. But anyone who's interested, we have a standard town sterling application. They can call the DPW. We can send it to them. We have a very brief interview, kind of a get-to-know-you deal, and we can kind of go from there. So thank you for reminding me.
You want to apply?
Thank you.
Sure.
I can dig a hole. Yeah, never mind. Brad, just one thing, and I think it's interesting that you gave us this water operations and water projects update. It seemed to be a little confusion at the candidate's night the other night, where the gentleman going for the planning board was grilled on where we're going to get our water, how are we going to get our water, what's happening to our wells, and things like that.
Interesting.
Well, it would have been nice if, you know, I said, hey, wrong person. But just to be clear and for the general public to know, that's really not the planning boards.
No, I would say not at all. It falls solely under the DPW Board. We operate the water department, the water supply, municipal water supply and things like that. I don't know if maybe that got wrapped into, I think it's the planning board, the zoning board that deals with the aquifer protection by law. Maybe that got a little bit confusing. But we manage all the assets of municipal water supply, including production.
And you're looking for water?
We are looking for water.
If it little sticks out.
Correct. Always looking for water. We found plenty with this rain, but not the kind we're looking for.
That's the kind you're looking for.
Unfortunately.
Unfortunately, you're right. Okay, and then summer help, that was one of my questions. And other than that, I'm fine. Roseanne, you had a question?
I do, I do.
Stand up, introduce yourself.
Roseanne Mann.
Get up!
Oh, boy, I'm in trouble.
At candidate's night, there were a lot of people expressing concern about the water supply in Sterling and economic development with it pertaining to that. And they were wondering if we had enough water to proceed in different areas and just for the peace of mind that we do have enough water.
So the reason that we're looking for this additional source, sorry, the number one reason we're looking for this additional source is redundancy. So right now, we have two sources of water in town. We have West Sterling off Redemption Rock and Wester Road located on Route 12. If one of those sites go down, we don't have enough to supply, right? So we don't have enough to do if we have to build a treatment plant or if we have to make an upgrade. We have to be really careful about timing and when we do those kinds of things. We are not in a position to, you know, take a whole source down and run off one source. If we had three, we can now maintain our sources properly. We're getting into a world of very, very strict regulations. Every year, it seems like a new, what we call MCL, or maximum contaminant limit, comes out. We're needing to do constant upgrades at our stations and eventually, it's going to need to be a lot bigger upgrades. So we need to have that flexibility to be able to take a station offline, build an appropriate treatment facility or make an appropriate upgrade, and be able to still serve our residents. As far as the amount of water that we have, we have enough water to produce what we need to produce. So in 2020, 2020, or 2021, 2022 was a very, very dry year. We were close to our permanent amount. So we're permanent by the State of Massachusetts for the amount of water we can withdraw. It's an average per day. We were very close to that on that extremely drought year. Last two years, we've been fine. So really what that taught me was I need to be very diligent with water bans if we have a drought year. You know, oftentimes, we put the water ban out, the signs go up, and we leave the people, you know, as they, as they are, right? But in the future, if there's a drought, we'll be being much more diligent with water bans. But as far as having enough water and economic development, I don't see an issue there. Yeah, we're certainly not, like, strapped.
And when do you anticipate getting another well going?
So this, this, it's a long process. I mean, by the time we go through the Article 97 legislation, get a building permitted, funded, billed, we're looking at at least three or four years, if not more. These processes are not quick.
Is that in the process already?
Yeah, so we've, we've spent many years on the Crowley Road site. It's been tested. It's now been half-permanent, but the issue is it's on DCR property. So we need to coordinate that, get that figured out.
Thank you.
Podium, please, introduction.
Sure.
Brian Klein, Hotel Road. I just wanted to ask, Brian, well, thanks, Brian, for your summary. Just questions, a couple of questions or requests for clarifications on water.
Yep.
Is it correct that we have two primary wellheads that we use now or?
Technically, we have six, but two sites.
Primary fields, so to speak.
Yep, yep, that's right.
So this redundant source along Crowley Road, my recollection from the existing swap reports or whatever was that the fields that we currently have are maybe highly susceptible to surface contamination from salt or maybe beaver damming issues.
More salt, yep.
My sense is Crowley Road overcomes that as far as a redundant source, like if we have like a total toad floater of a storm.
It certainly helps. Crowley Road, and I remember several years ago, reading an article when Paul Lyons was here and him saying, "Quality over quantity is what we're looking for in our next source." And that's true, right? We don't need to be pumping 1,000 gallons a minute, but we need good quality water as a redundant source or a way to lessen our other sources and kind of work together source-wise. I would not say that our sites are susceptible to surface contamination. They're technically not under the influence of surface water. They've been tested numerous times with a microbacteriological test that's proved that they're not under that influence. Yes, they can be issues from time to time. It's hard to pinpoint what they're from. But the sodium or from the salt, that penetrates down well below the surface, which is why we've seen higher elevations of calcium numbers and sodium numbers.
Okay.
Some of our sites.
And even, even with the redundant source coming into play in maybe three, four, or five, whatever number of years, the permitted amount that we can withdraw on a given day does not increase because we have another source. It's just redundancy to protect us in the event we lose a well.
Correct. That is a much more difficult process, believe it or not. Even though it's only a number, it's extremely difficult because it involves all the watershed organizations and all the towns within the Nashville River Basin getting together for withdrawal permits and things like that.
Okay.
So that will not change with this source.
All right, thanks for the clarification.
Good job.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay. Make it quick. Lock your game on, he's got it all.
Thank you for the presentation, Ryan.
Appreciate it.
Phil King, Elliott Road.
And what makes you think you don't have to steal that?
Phil 16, Elliott Road. First of all, thank you for the presentation and thank you for saving the town money.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Okay, thank you so much, Brian.
Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda was a school budget article discussion. As everybody knows, this board voted a few weeks ago to combine the regular school budget or the budget that the state makes us do, as well as the discretionary. My goal tonight was to try and have a school committee member come in because we've heard from the finance board, we've heard from the select board, we've heard from a couple of townspeople. I really want to hear what, how they got to where they are. And I do know that they did work hard and push and are as unhappy with the numbers as we are, but feel bound by what is needed as we move forward. So that was the only point of having them tonight. And none of the school committee members could make it tonight. Conflict, conflicts arise. I know, Kristen, you looked into some of this and anything you'd like to put up there?
Not really. I, I mean, I do my homework. I spoke to finance committee members. I spoke to school committee members. I spoke to a friend who was a previous school committee member. He was now a select board member and another watch who's at town. So I was really taking everything into account and doing my homework to make the right decision. But I just want to say that the fact of the matter is, we don't make the decision and the finance committee doesn't make the decision. It's the voters and the small percentage of voters that show up to town meeting who will make that decision. And then it is our job to manage the outcome of that decision and that's really all there is to it. So that's my spiel.
David?
I have nothing to add to that. Very well said.
Any other comments? All right, then we'll move along. David, you had something about employee appreciation?
Yes, so previously, we didn't do it last year. I think time slipped away from us. But the year before, we did an employee appreciation lunch, which I believe the Select Board funded. I would like to get that on, back on the schedule, back on track and make it an annual event. I think it's important that we recognize the good employees that we have. And if we can just set aside a couple of hours on a, hopefully a sunny day. It was pretty hot that day, if I recall.
Ah, that's sunny.
Yeah, but I talked to David and he would be more than willing to host the event at the fire station so that would give us some indoor space to put some tables and get out of the sun or rain. We just need to, if everybody approves of this, pick a date.
You have a date in mind?
I'm open to suggestions.
You got a date?
I mean, I don't have a date, but maybe sometime in the fall would be a good time when people are back from vacations and things.
So that's what we tried last year.
Oh.
We said, let's do it in the fall. It slipped away from us.
Yeah, we did it in June.
Yeah.
Tried to have it, and then it was 90 and sunny and that was tough.
Yeah. That's why it'd be good to have the fire station. Right.
My thought was to do it sometime in June.
Earlier rather than later so people are still around.
Yep.
True.
Well, you just included the people in the town hall and they'll work, so they will be here. But if you're including non-paid employees or volunteers, then that's a different issue, which never has been, they've never been invited in the past, so.
I don't know where you're going with that.
Just as what I said.
Bill, preference?
Doesn't matter to me.
Pull up a calendar and pull out a number, May, June, and how about June 10th? No specific reason, but June 10th, early in June.
June 10th, it's a Monday.
All right, go for it.
Make a motion that we hold an employee appreciation lunch hosted and funded by the Select Board on June 10th, 2024, to be held at the fire station.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, so you'll set, oh, all those in favor?
Newman, I?
She's right.
Cranston, I?
Who?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Listen, we can't.
You're done by lunch now.
Not only that, it's not an all-day thing, Vicki. You know, we're not having a cornhole competition or a fire hose thing or anything like that.
I'll just come down, have a burger and a dog and go back to work.
Okay.
We deliver.
We deliver. Okay. Okay, and the next thing on our agenda is 64 Haywood Road.
58.
68, I'm sorry. And this is just released. The project is basically completed, Bill?
Yeah, everything, the earth removal piece was done early after, whatever the timeline was laid out in the permit. Everything's been stabilized as it's supposed to by Graves', recommendations. And building permit's obviously been pulled and there's a house there, so. This is just allowing the bond to be released so that the earth removal holder, permit holder, is not still paying for it.
Kristen, do you have any questions?
No, I think I had asked before the meeting started. You just clarified that everything's been stabilized and signed off by the engineer, so that was my only questions.
David?
I'm with you.
Okay, so I would make a motion that we accept this letter for the purpose of the bond release on 68 Haywood Road, Sterling. That is of April 24th. All those in favor?
Newman, I?
Smith, I.
Cranston, I. Okay, and?
Hey, just another question about that project.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a question about the public hearing for that project. It was, I think Mr. Simpson made a commitment to extend an easement to the town to access the back line. At that hearing, has that been registered or was that part of the process?
He was going to give us the easement?
You had suggested, my recollection is you had suggested that an easement be granted and he agreed to it in the, in the public hearing for the earth removal.
Yeah, we had looked into it. The way that the width was going to go based on the driveway, too, it wasn't, wasn't entirely feasible. And there was a financial consideration, too, of having a road go through the middle of it, so.
I don't, I don't think it was articulated that it had necessarily be a road. It was kind of implied it would be on the road, but if it can't be the road, that's a significant...
There's still heavy subdivision standards of the road, so it had to be a 50-foot right-of-way through there.
That's why, I'm just, I'm wondering, like, if there's any potential that the easement, maybe it's a trail easement because there's a trailhead directly across the road.
What a surprise that you would bring up a trail easement, Mr. Klein.
Well, it's, there's something like 14 or 17 acres of backland and 300 contiguous, 300-plus contiguous acres of Clinton Waterworks land right in that vicinity. And there's already, the most popular trailhead for the Wiki-Piki is directly across the street. So it's a natural crossing point along the Wiki-Piki. And it might be a nice gesture for us to look at that if, if, you know, there may be a way to overcome the financial burden and just make it a trail easement along the perimeter of the property. But it would need to be done before the house is sold. Once the house is sold, it's a lot more difficult to consider that connectivity. Once sold, we lose it forever, is what I'm...
Have you broached the subject with the contractor?
I haven't. I, I thought that the Select Board would handle the easement. And if there's not an easement on the road, I'd like to suggest that maybe there's one in the woods. Because when people are in that vicinity, they prefer to be in the woods and not on roads. That's why they go there.
I mean, we could, we could check with Mr. Simpson, but there were no promises made and there was going to be a financial burden to the town if we went to the backlog.
I think he, he made a commitment to extend an easement to the town of Sterling.
You can check with him.
So I, you know, I'm fine that it's not a roadway easement. I'm just, I just make, I, I think it might be a nice gesture to consider, you know, honoring what seemed to be said.
Because it's not your property.
No, but it was said in a public, it was at a public hearing where we were extending your, the Select Board was extending...
Well, checking on that.
And it was essentially, seemed like a prenuptial to me as a, as somebody who attended the public hearing. I'm here on behalf of the public tonight. That's why I'm on this side of the table.
I think he did say...
Did we have a prenup? We could look into that, Brian.
Yeah, he did say that he would check with his engineers, see if it was possible. But I don't think that it was a trail at the time, but that would, that does make a lot of sense with a trailhead being right across the street. So it would be nice.
You can check, Brian.
Okay. Thanks, just consideration, thank you.
Okay, Bill?
Yep. Ryan already mentioned the townwide cleanup and their open house on the 4th. Town meeting is on the 6th. Annual town election's on the 13th. As for the beach work, we have the parking lot area complete. That was graded by Lazaro, which should help some of the erosion, the left to right, the stuff that doesn't go onto Hall Ave. Some of the tree work that needed to be done for the trenching, the erosion control trench and rain garden that goes in. The tree work and stumping has been completed. And in the next couple of weeks, I think the 13th, the drainage trench and rain garden is going to be installed at the beach. Obviously, we have some timelines with the grant funds that we do have at the end of the fiscal year, so we are plugging along as quickly as possible on those. Yesterday, Stephen, Ryan, our engineering consultant, and I submitted the MVP grant for the Redemption Drop, Redemption Rock Pump Station Road and that vulnerability there and the one-stop grant application, the expression of interest. We got that submitted and the feedback for the downtown project. The grant portal opens up the beginning of next month and goes through the beginning of June. So we'll be looking at trying to get as much information as possible in there and work with Weston and Sampson on getting that submitted. So I think those are the biggest items that we have going on. Ryan mentioned the Complete Streets on Maple and Bird Street. That should be starting reasonably soon, so, yeah, we've got a, got a bunch of things going on and not a lot of time to get them all done.
Did any questions, Kristen?
Just any update on the conservation agent and trying to share any other town?
Having done another town, obviously dropped them backed out of that based on their commission. So it is posted as just us for now. I think the deadline on that is, I think the first is a Friday or whatever that... I think the deadline on that is, I think the first is a Friday, or whatever that next Friday is. At this point, I don't have any applications, so we will see what we get. Otherwise, we'll have to look at maybe doing a different model of how that's going to operate.
Thank you. David?
I'm good. Thank you, Bill.
Okay, just a couple of things. We mentioned the cleanup, yes, but also, town meeting, May 6th, elections, the 13th. Put it on your calendars. We have a faux ballot, not a lot of competition, but at least come out and vote for those who stepped up and stepped in. And then, also, as board, or as a town, I'd like to offer our condolences to the Davis family. As you all may know, John Davis passed away on April 9th, and John was a member of a lot of our boards back in the day, both agricultural wives on the planning board at one time, and really, an iconic member of our community. He actually, literally, put Sterling on the map with Davis Farmland. I mean, you go up there, and you meet people from all over, and it's all for Dan. So condolences to the Davis family. Also, big day tomorrow, if you're all around, and you want to stop by and wish Bill a happy anniversary. It says two years he's been gracing us with his presence, and I can't thank him enough. Makes our job a lot easier with all the work that you do, Bill, so thank you. Just don't ask for more money. Christian, else?
I'm all for that.
Okay, anybody for, yes, Roseanne? That's right, get up.
I know you do. Seeing how it's Earth Week, or 22nd was Earth Day, I know that we had an environmental agent. I'm not sure if that's what you were talking about beforehand, Kirsten, about?
Conservation.
Conservation, yeah. Do we have any information on that, and any, any leads, or?
No, that's what they were talking about.
That's why I wasn't quite sure, because I don't speak the same language.
Yeah. It's, yeah, next week, I think you said, Bill, would be when all the applications, which are few and far between.
There's a bunch of towns that are looking for the position right now. DEP and DCR are scooping them all up.
And we have been, we've been trying to hook up with other towns, like you said, Rutland, but Rutland doesn't want to hook up with anybody. We looked into West Weston.
Would we be better off to just get a full-time person in here to do that type? Because it's a, it's a very important position, especially when we have the mining over here going on, and, you know, other places in town. I mean, would we consider that as a, as a full-time position to, to watch out for the environment of Sterling, as well as other aspects that we do look after? So, that might be, as a citizen, that might be something that would be an important position to, to look into on a full-time basis.
Like Bill said, they, like, we had one, two, and they, they jumped. DCR is offering a lot more money.
Were they full-time or part-time?
Part-time, good.
The part-time here?
They were all doing two separate towns, so.
Yeah, 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 but if we just hired somebody on a full-time basis, then, you know, people don't look elsewhere for other employment if they have what they need in a place where they're working.
Yeah.
So, just.
We'd have to look into that.
Throw that out there.
Thank you. Okay, would that be?
In the same vein as all the comments that were just made, on the conservation agent, I am concerned that in the current job market, the part-time job is going to be really hard to fill, in the absence of significant benefits.
Yeah, finding that.
Yeah, and, and even if you get someone in here, you train them, the risk is that you're just springboarding them. So, one, a couple of things to keep in mind is, I think the open space plan, I'm not involved on the open space implementation committee anymore, haven't been since before 2010, but I think there, that there is an update coming up, and that's going to cost the money, it costs the town some money in some way, through a consultant or whatever, but depending on the agent you hire, you know, if you do consider something like maybe moving it towards full, full-time, they could do the open space plan support in addition to the conservation agent work. And if there's any considerations that we might have a sustainability officer that's looking at things, you know, maybe teaming more with, say, Ryan from the DPW, looking at stormwater issues, and how that not only impacts the DPW, but, you know, it's just, just sustainability in general. Just, there seems to be more demand for things in that range. So, I think if you, you look at it in a big picture, we may get forced towards full-time, and, but, but just recognize some of the outsourcing we've been forced to do historically through contracts to the Regional Planning Commission, et cetera, we can avoid those costs and put it into, invest in our own people.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Lane? I knew it.
Richard Lane, 45, Angel Road. I, I just, this is your last meeting before the town meeting, correct? Yeah. So, I figured I'd stop by and ask if you, if there was any need or desire for me to introduce the, or do anything with the warrant article that I brought to you, that you, you adopted and put in there?
Yeah.
I, I don't know if you, just figured I'd ask you.
What, what do you want to do, Richard?
I don't want to do anything. I'm asking if you want me to. In the, in the past, you know.
Well, I, I'm just, I'm guessing that somebody is going to speak to that article at town meeting, and let everybody know, but if you feel so people aren't aware of it, and you would like to put it out there right now, have at it.
Okay, so officially, I'm not doing anything, but I will speak to it, absolutely.
Does, does he have to present it to the?
That's, that's all I'm asking.
Present what?
The article.
The article.
No, it's already on the warrant.
I understand.
He's asking if he's the speaker.
Oh, are you going to present? Is that what you're saying?
That's what I asked.
Oh, yeah, sure, you can present.
No, no, I asked if you wanted me to, or if you were.
Tonight or at the town meeting?
At the town meeting.
Okay, fine.
No, I'm not asking that.
I got you covered.
Okay.
Your name's on the warrant, okay? We're going to put your name right on.
Either way, I'm going to speak to it. I just want to know if I'm supposed to present it.
Okay, exactly.